Good evening and welcome to the Revere City Council Meeting of October 28, 2019. Will the members of the audience please join with the Revere City Council in a salute to our flag?
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Roll call the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Navaselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Path.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, and Councilor President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 7, 2019.
Some will favor, I'll oppose. So ordered.
Calendar item number three, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to Lenny Piazza for his lifelong commitment to community service and historical conservation efforts.
I'm gonna just call up... Good evening, I'm just gonna call up Carol Ty to say a few words, School Committee, Carol Ty.
You wanna sit, Lenny? You wanna sit down? I have a couple of words I'd like you to say. As soon as we... I think everybody in the room and everybody watching on TV at some point in time in their lives came across Lenny Piazza. So tonight he's gonna be recognized by some of his friends from Beauchamp, longtime friends, and I mean close friends. And I will read the certificate of commendation as it reads, and then thereafter, there'll be a couple of people wishing to say a few words on behalf of Lenny, and I'm sure Lenny will not be shot on words either, so he'll have something to say also. The City of Revere Certificate of Commendation, an acknowledgement of your outstanding civic and historical contributions to our community, which include the children's charity of the Beauchamp VFW, the Beauchamp Summer, Enz BBQ, to benefit MDA, the Revere Historical Society, the Erumney Marsh Burial Ground Annual Bocce Tournament, the Beauchamp Improvement Committee, the Knights of Columbus. Special recognition is hereby afforded to lifelong Revere resident, Len Piazza. In witness whereof, this certificate of commendation is gratefully bespoke by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2019, and in the Independence of the United States of America, the 243rd. Signed by Ashley E. Milnick, City Clerk, and City Council President, Arthur Guanasso. Motion was offered by Councilor Joanne McKenna. At this time, Carol Ty will have a few words to say. The celebrant goes last.
Well, Lenny will have several things to say too. But, you know, when I was talking to Lenny, I said, "What year did you graduate from Revere High School?" 1945. He's a real Revere boy, born, brought up here, still living at 177 Bellingham Avenue, has children here, and he has just loved every minute of it. I looked him up in the yearbook, and this is what they said about him, that he was, he used to wear sharp socks, he was tall and willowy, a good worker, always on the go, one of the comics in the class, and a great man with the ladies. And I think he hasn't changed that much for all his years. On the serious side, he's... Lenny is one of the personifications of the greatest generation, a WWII veteran. He graduated from Revere High in 1945, and he went, and then one month later, he was in basic training, stayed there throughout his time, was glad to get home, but proud of his service, has continued to be a member of various veterans organizations, goes around on his own, gets food for the veterans and delivers it to them if they can't get out themselves. He continues to serve this city in any capacity that he can. We have all been enriched by his life, and wish to have many more years, and when he reaches 100, I'm sure he'll get a certificate here too. Thank you.
I wanna, I would, I would like to thank all of you for this terrific opportunity, and I have just a few words, and I am definitely a few words. Thank you for this certificate of commendation for my lifelong service at my current 92 years of age, which I appreciate. One of the things that comes to mind is that, at times, we have experiences that are adverse to what we would like to experience in our lives. Unfortunately, at this time, I could, I'm not going to elaborate on that, but it exists. And I listen to the advice of friends, I listen to the advice of Carol, and we have to believe that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. So with the cooperation of the current administration, the City Council, and the people of the City of Revere, I'm sure I will persevere. Thank you very much. This is the big...
You get it. No, I'm fine.
Carol, get over here.
Sure. Sure, Harry. Give me the orders.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Carol. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you all.
We're gonna go this way. All right, take your time. Take your time. Carol, good job, as usual.
disposable, plastic straws, stirr sticks, and hot stoppers.
Any proponents wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the straw ordinance? Nobody? Okay. Any opponents? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Ralph DeChico, Chairman of the Revere Commission on Disabilities. I have some handouts that I'd like to give to the councilors, if that's okay.
Give it to the City Clerk. And to all involved, this is going to Legislative Affairs after we, after the councilors had a chance to speak, we are going to offer this to Legislative Affairs.
I also have, one of the Commission of Disabilities members was unable to come tonight, so she had also given me a separate letter that I'd like to possibly read in, and I have a copy of that also to give, but I'll do mine first, if that's okay.
If it's lengthy, it's gonna go to Legislative Affairs, we ask you to read it there, if not, we...
I'd really appreciate it if I could read it here for the edification of the public. It took me several hours to do this after I seen this, this motion was coming up. Dear Council President and members, there seems to be a push to ban plastic single-use straws with major companies and cities across the globe in order to reduce ocean pollution. Plastic straws account for 2,000 tons of more than 9 million tons of the ocean plastic waste. Plastic straws have suddenly become a symbol of all unnecessary trash that ends up in the ocean. Please do not misunderstand me or the disability community. We do understand that this is still a lot, but there are other areas that should and could be looked at. The plastic straw brand craze, yes, I said it, plastic straw ban craze, is only the latest example of policies, rules, regulations, and laws that have, however well-intended, negatively impacted people with disabilities. These issues include everything from disabled students being able to use a laptop for assistance in a college class, to the opioid crackdown, to subminimum wage laws. If you don't need a straw to take a sip of water, pain medication, to deal with the effects of a chronic illness, or a laptop to take notes in your college class, it can be easy to overlook how policies such as these impact someone, someone else's everyday life. Just for one minute, would it feel, how would it feel like not to be able to marry the love of your life, fail of losing the benefits you need to survive? Because most benefits are based on income. Disabled people also often lose these if they get married. The amount you're allowed to have in your bank account does not double when you get married, and both people's bank accounts are counted. This is known as the SSDI marriage penalty. Imagine working all day only to get paid less than a dollar of your hours to the laws that allow disabled people to be time-tested, and paid less than minimum wage in places known as sheltered workshop. Imagine being in severe, chronic pain and not being able to get your pain medication because your state has imposed overly restrictive, limited on pills. These are common realities faced by individuals with disabilities, a community that is much bigger than many realize. Nearly 1 in 5 Americans have a disability, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, and more than half of these report that their disability is severe. I'm sorry to have to say this, but people, people living with a disability means having to worry about things on a daily basis that never cross other people's minds. It means worrying about whether somebody will come to help you get out of bed in the morning. It means a morning commute completely derailed by an elevator outage. Living with certain disabilities means only being able to travel to cities where accessible transportation is an option. Living with disability takes a lot of planning and energy to learn how to exist in a world that is not made for you. People with certain disabilities should not need to add, "Will they have a straw?" to their list of worries every time they want to go out for a cup of coffee, or any type of social event. People with a huge range of disabilities depend on plastic straws to access beverages and very water that they need to survive, cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, and multiple sclerosis, among many others. So for so many people with disabilities, something as mundane as a straw represents independence and freedom. And the conversation around the environmental impact without consideration of who uses straws and why demonstrates on how people with disabilities are often forgotten. These policies were certainly not made with the intention of people making the lives of people with disabilities more difficult. It is far, it is far more likely than people with disabilities were not thought of at all when these policies were conceived or enacted. Our voices in the disability community are often left out of the conversations and our needs so rarely considered, because disability people are not seen as fully equal members of society. And instead of just banning things, we need solutions that consider everyone. We don't have to choose between making the world more sustainable or making it more accessible. With a bit of creative thinking, we can achieve both. Restaurants can make plastic straws available upon request instead of offering to them with every drink. This will still dramatically reduce the waste while ensuring the straws are available for those who need them. Currently, the statistics are, there is 9 million tons of plastic ocean waste in the environment. Out of that, 2,000 tons are from plastic straws. We live in a beautiful, diverse world, and it's important to protect it, but it's also important to protect the quality of life of people of all abilities living in it. Thank you for your time, and please let Revere take the lead by not considering to create an ordinance in any shape or form to ban and prohibit the use of single-use disposable plastic straws. I ask this on behalf of all the disabled individuals who depend on their availability and use when they visit any establishment in our great city of Revere. Sincerely, Ralph DeChico, Chairman of the Revere Commission on Disabilities.
Thank you.
I also included, there's a graph in there, reusable straws are not ideal alternatives for, for people with disabilities, and it states the metal, the bamboo, the glass, the silicone, the acrylic, the paper, pasta, and single-use. And it, it shows the list of why they're not acceptable for people with disabilities, and why. So I gave that to the...
Can you give that copy to the City Clerk and she'll...
Yes, I'm gonna give a copy of that to everyone also.
Thank you.
And just for...
That'll be part of the records of Legislative Affairs.
Yes, and just the other letter that I have to give to everyone. Did I give that copy to everyone? The graph went out already? The graph? Yeah. And then, just, this is just one more letter from one of the members on the Commission of Disabilities, unfortunately, she could not come tonight. It says, "Dear all, most of you know my son Frankie, and those of you who don't, Frankie is autistic. Autism for families like mine means that there are many other diagnoses that go along with it, such as sensory processing disorder, among many others. Sensory processing disorder for my son means he cannot handle many everyday sounds, loud crowds, certain textures, smells, hot and cold food, and drinks, and he cannot put certain things in his mouth. Frankie, like many others like him, live a very different world than you or I. Something as simple as just don't use a straw, switch to a paper, or try reusable ones simply won't and cannot work. My son self-regulates when in certain situations such as going out to eat in a restaurant, and that means for Frankie, he bites his straw to the point that when our meal is over, the straw is chewed shut. Paper straws would break a pot in his mouth, and reusable ones could, could chip and break his teeth in, in his moments of self-regulating. I'm here today to ask you to please consider families like mine and many others who live in our community, so that there are many just like my Frankie, right here in the city we call home. We should be able to continue to take him to his local favorite family restaurants and have the same amenities and tools offered to get through a meal. I say tools because straws for my son is a tool that allow him to drink outside of his home so he cannot handle the feeling of a cup to his mouth. Thank you for taking the time to hear this mom's point of view, and I hope you do not vote in favor of this motion. Sincerely, Michelle DeBellas, 52 Sherman Street, Revere, Massachusetts, 02151."
Can you also give that to the clerk?
Yes.
Okay, this is going to Legislative Affairs. So ordered.
Motion to suspend rules?
There's a motion on the floor to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Rules are suspended.
Mr. President, could I take...
Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. Within the confines of this, I'd also like to, if I could, thereafter, point to personal privilege.
We're taking up calendar item number 12 for the edification of those at home and those in the audience and the City Councilors.
Madam Clerk, do you mind if I read this? Yes, I would.
Read your statement.
That the mayor requests the state police and/or state auditor to investigate the policy and procedures regarding the release of information from the Revere Police Department, in particular, the release of a domestic event involving my children on October 2, 2012, in which Officers Soto and Duka were involved. The information was released on September 16, 2019, in apparent attempt to discredit me publicly. I demand answers, and I demand an investigation from an outside agency. If this can be done to a public official involving my children, it can be done to any one of you. Remember that. If it can be done to me, and my kids, it can be done to you. Now Officer Mangino responded saying that this document, which releases personal protected information, is public record. Yet, within this document that she writes, our response to the requested date of 10/23/19, which is a response to me requesting a Freedom of Information Act, asking who requested this information. The response from the police department was, "The Revere Police Records Division does not have any record or document responsive to your request." That means someone walked into the Revere Police Department and got a log entry and did not have to submit any information as to who they were. But furthermore, what's even more troubling, what's even more troubling, the information that was also released had to do with an event in which my children were a victim in 2009. This person has been harassing me for the past month and a half. I know who it is, but this person has been harassing me in an event in which no one should know what took place, in which only the DA, the Revere Police Department, and myself should know. But this person who released, who got this information here, also reiterated, reiterated that they know of another event, and they speak of the date exactly. So if they're going after my kids to get to me, I'm a public official. It's disgusting. And I want an investigation from the state auditor and the state police. And I will also say this, currently, there is an investigation by the state police by Sergeant Shanks, and I'm going to find out who's doing this. And you, sir, if you go near my kid again, I'm gonna beat the shit out of you. You got me?
Counselor. Counselor.
No. I'm sorry. I'm sick of Mr. Riccio going near my kid.
Counselor.
It's on, I, no, I'm sorry. This should not stand. I'm sick of the harassment of him and online bullying my kid. My kid is in fear because of you, sir. You're a disgrace. You're a disgrace. With that said, Mr. President, I've said my piece, and I'm sorry, I must apologize to everybody, but if you're a father and you have a daughter, you know how I feel. Thank you.
The motion will refer to Legislative Affairs. Thank you.
Mr. President...
Who are you sure, return?
Mr. President, one second, please.
Counselor Rotundo.
I want to also point out that Mr. Rose has also had his information publicly put on there, personal protected information from the Revere Police Department as well. He has it in his hand. This, and his wife, so this, this is more than just me.
Thank you. This is gonna go to Legislative Affairs, and hopefully, Mr. Rose can be in attendance there, and he can talk it over there with the chairperson, Mr. Keith, Councilor Keith, and we can get to some sort of resolution. We're not a police body, we're not a judge and jury, we are a city council, so this might be outside of our domain, but at any time, a city councillor or a member of the family of a city councillor has been brought into the public light, the city councillor has a legal right by this body to speak out. Motion to return to the regular audit of business. Back to the regular audit of business.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of Enrico Ventorelli and Anthony Ventorelli, 15 North Mountain Ave Melrose, Mass., requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere as follows. An ordinance further amending the zoning map of the city of Revere. Section 1, Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere and the zoning map provided by Section 17.12.020 of said title is hereby amended to change the zoning district designation of property known as numbered, known and numbered as lots 63 Hawes Street, Revere, Mass. from Residential B District to the General Business District.
Please state your name and address for the record, please. Proponents.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Semione, and I represent Enrico Ventorelli and Anthony Ventorelli, owners of the property of 331 Revere Street. Madam Clerk, if I could hand you... Thank you very much.
Is this where they receive?
Yes, I just thought they would look at, it's just only the, it's only the map, in case they had any questions of where the land is located. Thank you. Mr. President, my client seeks this evening a zoning map change in accordance with 1712, 10 through 30 of the Revere Revised Zoning Ordinances. As noted in the advertisement, we're dealing with Lot 62 Hawes Street, which is approximately 2,025 square feet, is a vacant piece of land and located in the RB District. It's referred to as Assessor 1823, 293, Parcel 12. My clients own a property known as 331 Revere Street. It is an apartment house. This particular property, property 63, is attached to that property. My client seeks this honorable counsel to grant a zoning map change so that this 2,000 square foot parcel can be zoned from RB to GB, with the goal that they would like uniform develop, uniform zoning on that small parcel of land, and, and the opportunity to use that land for off-street parking. I mean, it's any questions the council has. I've provided you the, the actual map and the location of Lot 63.
This is going to the zoning subcommittee. We're gonna hear proponents first, and then we will hear any opponents. On the proponent's side of the public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none and hearing none, any opponents? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, any city councils wishing to speak? Council Chairman Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this is going to my committee, however, just a couple of questions for the Perhaps I wasn't paying strict attention to your presentation, I know that shocks you. However, what is the parking, what is the nature of this?
This, this particular piece of property is presently vacant and undeveloped, but it's part of the holdings of my client. It's my hope, and their hope, to use this for off-street parking.
For?
For their present apartment house, and any modifications therein that might be made in the future.
So in other words, this is just gonna add additional parking to their apartment house?
It will be to add off-street parking that isn't there for their existing apartment house.
Okay, we'll take this up.
Mr. Chairman, this is going to your committee.
Yeah, it's going to my committee, I've had enough. Thanks. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of 338 Squire Road LLC, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere. They're looking to change lots 831, 832, and 833 Sagurni Street, Revere, Mass. from Residential B District to the General Business District.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, my name is Attorney Lawrence Semione, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts, Attorney at Law. To you and the members of the City Council, again, Madam Clerk, could you please, thank you very much. The clerk is just, you know, handing out a site plan, so you can reference where and what we're talking about. Mr. President, my client is a Massachusetts Limited Liability Corporation called 338 Squire Road LLC. Its address is 338 Squire Road. The LLC seeks a zoning map change in accordance with 1712, 10 through Section 30 of the Revised Zoning Ordinances. The particular locus in mind is identified as Parcel 23A on the plan that's just been handed to you. It is Assessor's Records 28438M, Parcel 23A. It's also referenced in the application that was filed with this honorable body as Exhibit Number 1. The locus is 6,561 square feet, it is a vacant piece of land, and it is located in the RB District. Essentially, the owners wish to use this land in concert with their existing self-service gasoline station, which is at 338 Squire Road. Self-service gasoline station is, is under Revised Ordinance 1708670 as defined, and is allowed by right in the GB District. The existing parcel that they have that operates that gasoline station is 78,775 square feet. The reason why they would like to, rather than develop this residential piece of land, abutting their particular business, is that they have a need for parking. And our desire to move that premises, that Parcel 23A, that's 6,561 square feet, will be essentially to provide off-street parking for employees that we have, for staff of vendors that work within the building, and overflow parking that comes in on peak in hours during operation. And as well, I'd like to note that we'd like to have uniform zoning for that particular parcel. Mr. Chairman, I answer any questions the council have? Other than that, I'd ask you to have it moved to zoning subcommittee.
Any other further proponents? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? When you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Marion D. Luigi, 64 Sagurni Street, Revere, Mass. I'm in favor, but I live on Sagurni Street, and ain't gonna make any more traffic than Market Bowsky did, so it ain't gonna change anything. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance. Any other, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Prizio, I live at 96 Pleasant Street.
I live at 96 Pleasant Street, Wilbur, Massachusetts. I'm the owner of 338 Squire Road LLC. We're seeking 6,561 square foot piece of land that's, that abuts my existing business for parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Rocco Falzoni, 55, Tuscano Ave. Every time I go in that gas station, I have a hard time parking to get a cup of coffee. Thank you.
Okay. We need parking for Rocco. Hi.
Hello, hi. Deborah Cacaviallo, 59 Goldie Street, Revere. I think it's a great idea. They need the, we need the availability of parking.
Okay.
And it would provide that for us. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, any councillors wishing to speak? Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although this is gonna save most of my comments for the, the committee, I just wanna stress how much that they need for the parking there. And it's gonna be changed to commercial, and it's only gonna be used for parking. I hope that's stated. If you put a two-family in there, I think that would congest the area worse. Thank you.
Counsel Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I'm a resident on Sagurni Street, and I wanna clear up a little bit of misinformation. I got a lot of calls over the weekend that there were letters distributed throughout Sagurni Street and my neighboring streets, which conveniently were not delivered to my house. And it spread some misinformation, and it got a lot of residents worked up. This is a good family. They're good business owners and they're good neighbors. I've lived on the street my whole life. This is gonna help, if anything, the congestion that's in that lot, and it's gonna help them better service the community. It's a local spot. And I don't want people to be nervous. I got a lot of calls saying, you know, what is this for and what are they doing? And to make Attorney Semione's presentation short and sweet, it's parking. They wanna provide parking, and they're trying to help be better neighbors. So if any of my neighbors and fellow Sagurni Street residents is concerned, feel free to give me a call, and we'll go through any other details. But thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just concerned, Mr. Semione, about the abutters. I mean, I know that if I was living, I understand that it, this gas station needs more parking because it's, it's inundated with traffic and, and people stopping. But I just wanna know about the abutters. Because if I was living next to a gas station and, and then an empty lot that was gonna supply cars, I wouldn't want it. So I was just wondering if you contacted the abutters, if they're okay with it? That's all I wanna know.
Historically, we wouldn't reach out to abutters. We'd wait for a public hearing, and we'd work with the ward councilman in this particular area. This particular locus has tremendous vegetation and buffering and fencing that surrounds this particular area that's been isolated and unused for, since 2012, when my clients purchased the property and built the self-service gasoline station. But at this point, you know, people who do good work, people who run good businesses, sometimes success results, and success sometimes means the need for off-street parking. So here, the idea is to take the employees and take their parking and, and provide more customer parking. That's the goal, and we think it'll be a benefit to enable.
One more question. How late is that gas station open until? Is it 24 hours?
I believe it is. That would be a nod for Mr. Prizio, 24/7.
Your shift change, Mr. Prizio? Your shift change, what time would that be? Your shift?
Yes, I heard.
I'm not saying anything.
No, 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 your shift change.
Yes.
I have shift changes three times a day.
Counsel, this is going to a zoning subcommittee. You can, well, you can, but it's going to a zoning subcommittee.
6210.
Counsel Murabito.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just, one more time back to Counsel McKenna. There will be discussions about lighting, if, you know, because we'd like to make sure that people are safe there. Those lighting would have to go to the Site Plan Review Committee.
This will be held at the zoning subcommittee. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you. I thought I had the floor before.
You did.
So two of my main concerns that you can, Mr. Prizio can bring up at the subcommittee were making sure there's no future development on that lot, and the only development is a parking lot because that area, that's, local market needs extra spaces. If anything, it will help the neighbors in that area and help the congestion and lessen the odds of traffics, traffic accidents. But I do wanna hear from the abutters as well. Next is, I wanna make sure that parking facility doesn't become a hangout or a drug dealing facility where people are just hanging out, playing music. I wanna know if it's gonna be locked after hours. Will there be security cameras? So this is the information. You don't have to answer it now. There will be an elaborate conversation during subcommittee, so please have those, that information for me.
To you, Mr. President. Yes, we'll address those issues. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been up there, I've looked at the property. I certainly wouldn't wanna see a two-family house going in there. What I'd like to see is that the area be kept in a clean situation, hot tops, make sure that the runoff from any water in there does not affect any of the director abutters. These gentlemen have been in Revere for several years now. They've done a remarkable job with their business, and I'm sure that if they are granted this variance, they will continue to do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this is going to my zoning subcommittee, but I, I, you know, I'd feel badly if I didn't mention that the, this business is, is a premier business in the city, and, and these people have shown a track record of doing the right thing. And when people try to improve their business by putting extra parking in a, in a lot that they own adjacent to the property, it appears to be a no-brainer to me. Now, we'll take it all up, and we'll go over all the fine details in the zoning subcommittee. But however, I mean, let's be real about this. That's all I get to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for letting me speak again. I was, I said I was gonna keep it brief, but I did stress that it's for parking. I had, this family I've known ever since they, they bought the place, and they, they run a great business there. It's like a neighborhood meeting place or a city meeting place. I don't, you know, you don't wanna have success, take a bad back step. So again, I, I walked the, the site with the counsel, with the lawyer, counsel, and it's, it's ideal for just parking. I mean, if you, you could probably make more money if you build a two-family, but, and he's thinking of his customers. So again, I, I didn't know there was gonna be such a conversation here.
Thank you, Counsel.
And I just wanna go on to committee.
We look for, we look forward to a nice conversation before Counsel Zambudo's zoning subcommittee, zoning subcommittee.
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Chairwoman, Jessica Janino, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr. President.
We're anxiously awaiting it.
I'll make sure to be very detailed in this report.
Okay. You have, you have two minutes.
Earlier this evening, the Revere City Council Subcommittee on Appointments met. There were four items on our agenda that we went through this evening, the first of which was a communication from the mayor's office for Spencer Contracting Corp. as a licensed drain layer. The next was of Diaz Construction Corp. as a licensed drain layer. Those are both new appointments for drain layers. Then there were two appointments for the Board of Health. There was a woman, Neha Lauti, from Revere, and also Bob Mara spoke on behalf of Craig Costanza, also of Revere, for appointments on the Board of Health. The Subcommittee asked several questions, but all four appointments were recommended unanimously from the Subcommittee in favor to go before the council for a vote this evening. So since there were no objections, I believe we can take them all up at once.
At the request of the Chairwoman of the Appointment Subcommittee, we ask that the city council vote for all at one time. If there's any objections, we can take that out. Seems like we have all in favor, all opposed. So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 10 is a communication from Captain Mangino responding to Counsel Rotendo's motion relative to the release of a police record.
We can place that on file. After we fall off the table.
Calendar item number 11, communication from Frank Ferrara, 204 Broad Sound Ave, requesting information and clarification regarding the easement along the seawall at Rogan's Point.
Mr. Ferrara? Please state your name and address for the record, please. We have a time limit on conversations before the council.
204 Broad Sound Ave.
Before you go into your conversation, Mr. Ferrara, we have a time limit on conversation before the council. We can send it to a Subcommittee.
That's why I brought some pictures, sir. They, they spray painted, when I pay my taxes, these are our parcel numbers, 24 of them all the way down. I have a list of my neighbors that signed a petition that said, to send me here today for some reason. That you all actually did a, where you put a, a elevation was supposed to be returned, the floodplain elevation, two years ago, hasn't, we haven't heard a thing. It was filed by the, you guys, the city, accreditation, it's called, and it was given to Matt Schultz, who's the engineer, the floodplain engineer. And he sends the correction to FEMA, and then I guess it gets lost in the, in the two years, and we haven't heard. So I'm, I have suspicions. I've been, ever since we got a letter with $250 fine a day for leaving obstructions here in this very private area. It says 10 feet from there today. A car is not, a truck is not driven down that road since 1997. I have the documents here, and back then, I've lived here all my life, back there, back then, they sent this document here, which, which describes, which describes that we can use the parcel for any, the owners can use the parcel for any purpose, describe attaching things to the wall.
Who's that from?
We cannot, this, this is from, I have that, that document here. Hold on for a second. It, we, that was the, the letter back in 97 when they put the cap on the wall. They said, after they leave there, we know we're amazing in this area, so now we got, we got this, this document that says a $250 a day fine, and that was two years ago. So they didn't, so I'm thinking, well, they gotta get our stuff out of the way. Understood. We're not supposed to attach things to the wall. That's very understandable. And then there are gates that define our private property. Now, they put these big signs.
I'm gonna suggest that this go before a committee. You get a lot of material here. I want you to be heard.
Mr. Guinasso, this sign is about this big. They put one in front of every house the other, about three weeks ago. They put our numbers here. This, this is a, this is a, it tells you how many feet you are next to your neighbor. This is going all around the world. I got this picture from California. A friend of mine sent that to me. So, so this, these numbers gotta go. There's no reason to have these, this is private property. And, and these things here, my neighbors told me, I've got a short list of names, and, and they, they told me that these, these things, my real estate agent said, "Curve appeal, 25% down." That's not right. You know, and if that's how we do it, then we gotta, what, pay 25% less taxes or something? Because that can be, that can be cataloged, that can be figured out. That's no big deal. Those signs are this big, and they're on everyone's property to the owners with a 10-foot spot between houses? You see this? This is the wall.
Whose attention in the city did you ever bring this to?
DCR did this.
The who? I'm sorry?
DCR.
Just today?
No, no, no. They put those things about a week ago.
Oh, DCR is a separate entity in itself. We, we can't, we, we can hardly even get cooperation with them when it comes to an event.
So, so this is why, this is what, all right.
State your point.
All right, sir. May I, may I finish? So this is a fear we have. They didn't repair the wall, they threatened us with $250 fine two years ago. Now they're coming with all this. So we really feel that eminent domain is coming now. We need your help to do this. We need, we need some help here. Mr. Rose, have a proposition to ask, ask, ask the candidates during this season if they, if they, for eminent domain on family dwellings at Rogan's Point. Yes or no, or whatever, you know?
Point of information.
Counsel is asking for point of information. Counsel, state your point, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had a conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers today, Kevin DeRoca. He's the Levy Safety Program Manager. They're not gonna, they're not gonna take your land, sir. All they want is a clear easement. DCR went over the top with the signs and...
They gotta come down here.
They did. They went over the top with the signs and, and putting your parcel number on the wall. They did. But all we're asking is, we have a contract with, and, and Mr. Mara can talk a little bit more about it, because I just talked, I just found out about this all today. But we have a contract because the Army Corps of Engineers came in years ago and, and gave Beauchamp millions and millions of dollars to fix the flooding down there. We have a contract, and the contract is that we need to keep a clear easement around, around the property of, of Broad Sound Ave.
Understood.
Okay? So what's happening is, to keep that contract going, if the contract is alive, then that means if a wall falls down in Beauchamp, then the Army Corps of Engineers will come and fix it. If we don't keep this...
That wall is sound. That's gonna be there for 40 years. This is eminent domain coming down on us. We need your help.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm trying to help you, sir. I will do anything for the residents.
All right, all right. But we don't want a dog path there. I heard that you proposed a dog path there once.
Mr. Ferrara?
We don't want a dog path there, Mrs. McKenna. We're not going for that.
Mr. Ferrara, you'll go through the chair, you won't speak at all. How, how can we make sense out of it?
I just, I just...
Both people are talking.
I didn't, I need more assurances than that.
I think the council has come up with some very valid information.
I, I really wanna be wrong. I hope so, but we need more assurances.
We're going to help you. But we can't help if we argue at one moment.
No, no, I'm sorry.
And we talk at the same time.
I don't wanna be argumentative, I'm sorry.
We wanna help you. I would be upset with this too, and I'm, I'm looking forward to helping you.
Yes, sir.
And Counsel McKenna?
All right, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear something that isn't sound.
May I finish, please? So to keep this contract open, we need to keep the easements clear.
I need to keep my private property.
All right? Excuse me. Can I talk, please?
There you go, Mr. Ferrara.
I didn't interrupt you, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. McKenna. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So we're not, they're not gonna take your land by eminent domain. They just wanna keep the easement open. And we, the, the contract is with the city and the federal government, and we wanna keep, we want to make sure that the cit, we don't lose that. Right now, the program is deemed unacceptable, and we wanna try to get back to enact the program between the federal government, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the city. Okay? If we lose this, then the city is liable to pay. If a wall falls down, and sir, I'm sorry...
I don't wanna break the law.
Sir, I'm sorry, but if you go where the curve is on Winthrop Parkway, okay? And we're going to see Bob Delio tomorrow about this.
Where the, where the stairs are?
Where, where the rocky beach is. That is going, a good storm, that is gonna fall, all right? And it's gonna cost millions of dollars to have that wall fixed, and it's gonna keep, it's gonna jeopardize the community. So we need to have this program active and clear so we can have the Army Corps of Engineers responsible. If the wall falls down, then they'll pick up the tab, the city doesn't. So that's what I know. And, and I know Bob Mara, if you wanna speak and elaborate, or did I say my piece?
This is gonna go to, this is gonna go to Legislative...
This is going to go to, this is going to go to Legislative Affairs, and I think that this needs a lot more discussion than we can have at a City Council meeting.
I just want to say that I think people are miscon.
Well, that's what we need you to do.
I really hope so. I have so much other stuff I'd like to show later, as you said.
But they're not going to, they're not going to touch your land, sir. Yes, I think.
This is a pattern.
I think over the top, DCR was over the top with you, and they shouldn't have put signs there, and they shouldn't have put your parcel land.
So that means you guys can't take them down?
Well, we'll make that suggestion.
We do not have the authority. DCR puts something up, we do not have the authority to take it down without their cooperation. And this is going over to Legislative Affairs, and I think that you've got to listen to the Counselor. She seems like she's working with you.
I would love to believe her. I'm scared.
So, no, don't be scared, because, you know, we want to rectify your problem. We don't want to get in debate.
All right, but I have stuff that, I know we don't have time for, that kind of, you know, makes her thing look a little bit lukewarm, and I want to bring those to the people.
We could wash this over unless you talk for another five, 10 minutes, and then get nothing to cooperate.
I want to give you some documents, so I'll shut up.
You could give that, give that to the Subcommittee.
Yes, absolutely.
And please work through your Counselor.
Now, how do you get the DCR to cooperate that that's private?
That's our job.
All right, here's one, here's one, then let me give you this one here.
That's our job.
Over here, he says, over here, he says, this is not to be used, right?
Okay, okay.
Over here, it says.
You can't use it. All right.
So these jobs, it's anything to give you.
Mr. Ferrara, this is going to Legislative Affairs. And please, Mr. Keefe, keep him informed, keep him informed.
Let me put them together, actually.
And go to Legislative Affairs.
Yes, I do. I'm going to give, no, you keep, yeah.
Mr. President, before we just.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this, but I've had conversations with this gentleman, and his fears are real. I just want to let the City Council know that his fears are real. He's lived here his whole life. He's worried about his property rights and the potential for the city to go in and take over his property, because of all this activity that's taking place down there. He clearly has numerous documents that he's saved, that he's received. So, you know, his fears are real. I think if we put this, as you say.
We've got to help them. There's no question about it.
Legislative Affairs. We have to make him and neighbors down there, by the way.
Absolutely.
Who aren't here tonight, but they're concerned, because they've had conversations with him. In fact, he had a meeting down at his property. So there is real genuine, you know, there is real genuine concern down there about this. And, you know, hopefully, we can get it all resolved.
This is the first I've heard of this. So now the Counselor is going to be keeping the Legislative Affairs intact. We can all join in. Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Legislative Affairs Counsel, I'd like to invite everyone to the next, well, the next Council meeting in November.
Whenever you establish that, you let us know.
I would also, to do it right, you know, we'll probably block off 45 minutes to an hour. And I would also like to invite our state legislation to speak on behalf. And I, you know, I understand where the fears can be real, but there seems to be a ton of misinformation as well, where people are getting nervous over what may not be much. I just met with some residents off of Broad Sound Ave that had something to do completely differently with this, and they're super excited that their wall is going to be corrected.
Well, we're going to have, the next Council meeting is going to be November 18th. You can schedule your Legislative Affairs meeting now. And so everybody in the audience and everybody listening at home could come to this meeting. And I think that we're going to work with you, Mr. Ferrara, and you've got Counselors that have already gotten involved with this, because you certainly.
It's 26 people. It's not just me.
No, no, we understand, and I wouldn't want that next to my property either.
26 families.
No, you're right, all the way.
Thank you.
There's no question about it. And we're not trying to.
Mr. Rose wants a little more assurance from you all.
We're, I'm going to give you the assurance, we're going to have Legislative Affairs, and we're going to get some results.
I know, but this is, this is right now tonight.
He has a paper here that he wants, it's a pledge from you guys.
Well, we're not going to pledge. We're going to, we're going to, we don't pledge. If we had a pledge for everything, it'd be ridic. We're going to tell you that we're going to honor our word, and that's what we're going to do.
It just says this, "In my mission for the future of Revere."
Mr. Ferrara, we are going to honor our word. There's no need for a pledge. This is going to Legislative Affairs, and the Chairman has a meeting on November 18th.
November 18th at 5:00. November 18th at 5:00.
November 18th at, what's that?
This is the most reasonable time of all for a pledge. This is a reasonable question. I'm going to give it to you.
I'm trying to work with you, sir. You work against me, then I work against you. I'm trying to help you. Legislative Affairs, November 18th at 5:00 p.m.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the City Council refer to a public hearing the attached proposed ordinance relative to the regulation of food trucks.
Counselor Rotundo has left the chamber, and he's asked that all of his remaining motions be placed on the table.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor requests Comcast and RCN to coordinate the removal of existing cable wires when new installations take place. As an example, there are several instances throughout Ward 1 where RCN cuts the old Comcast cable and internet wires and simply wraps the wires around the telephone poles.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So RCN came in to Ward 1, and in fact, all over the city, and has cut the Comcast cable wires and wrapped them around a number of telephone poles. Comcast should be responsible for removing their wires around the city, and RCN should do a better job when they're removing Comcast wires. So I'm just asking for Comcast to come into the city, and if they want, I can identify the poles in Ward 1, and maybe the other Counselors can identify their poles in their wards. But they should do a better job. They're just cutting them and wrapping them around the pole, and I have probably about 30 of them.
What I've been doing, Counselor, not to interrupt, is I've been calling 311, giving the street address and the home address, the pole in front of that home, and have, and they're doing it all over the city. Our city is a total mess because of RCN. They're coming in and they're cutting other cables for, obviously Comcast, and I'm not promoting one over the other, but it's, somebody's got to be brought forward here. And I think that what I would like through this motion, if we could, is to have RCN and Comcast come to a meeting, other than the monthly meeting. How about November 18th? Because our city is looking awful based on these, we're trying to beautify it, and I see every city, a street that we go down, you see these wires all hanging down and blowing. And then now with the wind, the wind is really causing havoc with it. So I'm sure every Counselor has a situation going on in their ward, and all the large Counselors have it, they're experiencing the same thing. RCN has not done a justice since the day they did installations, backing up with the beepers going on and tying up whole streets. They've been nothing but a nuisance since they've come here. State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Counselor McKenna, you hit this nail on the head. There are multiple poles throughout the streets, and I call it a candy cane wrap job. They literally take the wire and just wrap it down like a candy cane. Bless you, Counselor. I'm aware of you.
That's all they do.
I've submitted multiple tickets to 311, and they notify me that they've also contacted Comcast, but the issue is not resolved. So would it be possible to go back and look at all of the 311 tickets that have been submitted?
We're going to have them before us, and we're going to have them go street by street and clean up the mess. So we're going to invite them back. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, number one, RCN should not be cutting anybody's cables. They should be leaving them up there and let Comcast come in and remove them altogether at the time. Now, when people switch over, that is the time that they should be calling Comcast and say, "Listen, I don't have you anymore. I want your wires taken off my house." RCN should not be cutting anybody's cables. I don't care who they are. And number two, Comcast is not, as far as I'm concerned, a legitimate company. So they've given the shaft to all our seniors, who went to them when they first switched over and gave them a discount and all kinds of special events, and when they pulled out, they never honored the reduction, they never honored the rebates.
They've increased the premium.
It's terrible what they've done to our seniors.
Many constituents have told me that.
And I hope this Comcast person that comes in recognizes that, and we'd go after them at that time. It's a shame what they're doing in the city of Revere.
Are you finished?
I just wanted to go back to my point. Would it be possible for the City Council to get a list of all of those outstanding 311 tickets in regards to wires, and have that list ready for them when they come before this body?
We could do that also.
So that would be an emergency.
We could do that also.
Thank you.
But we want them here, because I'll tell you, they've not been truthful with their, they send out these flyers, and they haven't been truthful to the neighborhoods, and that's not a good thing. And it's about time we bring them up here, because people are complaining to me. They're going back to Comcast, because they don't like what's being done. Any other Counselors? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I had a couple of incidents with them down on Mills Avenue. I got a call probably about three months ago. They had installed a huge box on a pole down there in front of the guy's house, and he didn't even have Comcast, and he didn't want RCN. And it took me, you know, a couple of weeks to get them to remove that pole. Then there was another situation where, I think it was Mrs. Hurley, they ran a line across the side of her house. And never had a line there before. Ridiculous. And we did get it removed, though, and.
They are awful.
But if this is happening, you know, that's just two incidents, so I can imagine how many incidents there must be throughout the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other Counselors? All in favor, opposed? So ordered. Good motion, Counsel, by the way.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor request the construction companies responsible for closing portions of the Ocean Avenue sidewalk to create a pedestrian walkway while construction is in progress. Pedestrians currently have to walk on Ocean Avenue, and this is a public safety hazard. This work should be fulfilled by the winter months in order to accommodate commuters walking to the train station.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yesterday, I spoke to Steve Perdue of Red Gate Construction, and he assured me that their team is working on a, to configure a pedestrian-friendly walkway along the construction sites of Ocean Avenue. And they're going to open up West Street, which I asked for two months ago, so people can get off of Revere Beach Boulevard onto Ocean Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
We'll give them a little time. If they don't do the right thing, we'll call this back.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Council President Guanaso, that the mayor be requested to notify National Grid of the city's opposition to National Grid performing non-emergency utility work during the evening hours with the use of generators, and to direct National Grid not to perform such work. The sound produced by generators during the evening hours is a direct violation of the city's noise ordinance, and will create a nuisance for abutting residents near these proposed non-emergency work sites.
I was informed by some of the members of the union that this was the activity that's about to happen within our community. Now, you know how noisy National Grid is. And, you know, when you're trying to enjoy the evening, when the sun sets, that's the time that all work should stop in public areas. So certainly, I'm in favor of this. That's why I presented it, and I think the Counselor should also be in favor of this. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Janino, that the mayor look into the feasibility of purchasing a generator for the DPW. With the winter months coming up, the DPW offices must have power.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion was a result of an email that I received last month. If any of you remember, there was a weather incident that happened on October 16th, 17th, and 18th. We had a really bad storm. There were very strong winds. And I received an email at 8:30 in the morning on the 17th that said, "The DPW is currently down. They have no power at their location, so the phones will not work." And if that's happening in October, that severely concerns me for the winter months that are coming up. So we should get them a generator. And the good thing about a generator is, when the new facility is up and running and we don't need it anymore, there are other aging buildings in the city that can use it, so it's not going to go to waste. But that is absolutely essential, that that building have power, especially in a weather incident. And this wasn't even a big weather incident. And also on that topic, during that storm, I want to give a really quick shout-out to National Grid, because Dan answered me right away. We had a lot of areas in the city that didn't have power, and they were incredibly responsive. Dan got back to me in minutes and helped me get some residents with their lights back on. So I think this is absolutely needed, and I hope that we do it now, before the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Dan's been a great service to our community, even though he gets a lot of hits up here. This is a big city to do all the things that we need to be done. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18 is a motion of Counselor Rotundo.
That's to be tabled.
Calendar item number 19 is also a motion of Counselor Rotundo.
That's also to be tabled.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselors McKenna and Novoselsky, that the mayor request Veteran Services to adopt a veteran-pinning ceremony to honor living elderly veterans that have served in World War II, Vietnam, and/or Korean wars. The policy is attached.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. In September, my father was recognized in honor as a veteran in, at a veteran ceremony for his military service. It was absolutely beautiful, and I wish he was alive to see and hear the wonderful attributes that was said about him. And speaking with some people that were instrumental in organizing these ceremonies all over the city, it came to my attention that we should honor the living veterans that have lived in our city and served our country also, so they can hear how much we appreciate and honor their services. I found that some cities honor their living veterans with a pinning ceremony during Veterans' Day. The veterans chosen come up and are pinned and offer their services and get to tell their story. I feel that the city should adopt this pinning ceremony, and we should honor our living veterans that have served too. And I would like to hand it over to my co-presenter, Ira Novoselsky.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a great program, and it specifically targets those veterans 80 and over that have served in three separate wars on the United States, from World War II, Korea, Vietnam. And I think it is important, and we do have two ceremonies in Revere that the city does, along with Revere Veterans Committee on Veterans' Day. I don't know if we can pull it off for this Veterans' Day, because it's so close, but we can pull it off on Memorial Day also, and to recognize these folks. And I think it's very important that we do this, and I thank the Counselor for allowing me to join in on this motion. Thank you.
On the motion, anyone wishing to speak? I think it's a great motion coming up, because Veterans' Day is coming up, but there's also an appeal out there that I think this Memorial Day should be reserved strictly for those that are deceased. that are deceased.
I believe that too.
And I think Veterans' Day should be for those that are alive and thankfully we can pin them on that particular day. And I'll tell you, the city of Revere doesn't get the recognition it really deserves when it comes to these types of events. If you ever went to the Parvius School, what they do for Veterans' Day is unbelievable. I saw some of my neighbors, like I thought of some of my neighbors, a little old man down the street. Well, I saw this little old man up there with a big machine gun and off of, it was just amazing, the different feeling you get of men and women who serve in our community, what heroes they were. And we were lucky enough on this council to have members of the service who served and did well. But I'll tell you, that Parvius School, that's an achievement that I've never seen before. You leave their feeling so patriotic and so, they do it so well. And if you look and scan all the children in the audience, they're probably from 150 different nations and they're singing patriotic songs in unity for our country and for all those who served in our country, for the men and women in our services. It's amazing. It's really great. Gentlemen, at the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bill Jackson, 95 Stanton Avenue in the great city of Revere. I might mention I'm originally from Needham, but I am so delightfully happy to be a resident in this great city of Revere. I really want to compliment Ira and Joanne for this great motion honoring the living elderly veterans. I am living, but not elderly. Am I?
No, we don't know that well. Why is your name Wild Bill then?
No, it's Action Jackson, sir.
Action Jackson.
But again, I just, this motion that these two put through is a wonderful, wonderful motion to honor our veterans. And again, I want to thank Ira and Joanne for presenting your motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Action Jackson. Next. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So audited.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Council Patch that the mayor requests the traffic commission to install an electronic speed reader sign on the westbound side of Sargent Street heading towards Washington Ave. There is only a speed reader installed on the eastbound side.
Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. It speaks for itself. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So audited.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Council Morabito that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Sergeant Chris Janino in recognition of protecting and serving the city of Revere for 30 years on the Revere Police Department.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Sergeant Janino has served on the force for 30 years. When he learned that I was bringing this before the council, he gave me a call. Appreciative as he was, yet humble for his 30 years of service, he didn't think it was a big deal. But serving our city and its people for 30 years is a big deal to me and I'm sure it's a big deal for everyone up here. And someone who has to be on the streets every single day, take complaints, work overnights, work mornings, work all demanding shifts throughout that 30 years, take criticism while taking compliments at the same time, I think it's well deserved and we should recognize and appreciate his service for 30 years. So congratulations on your 30 years and he has too many more years.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm not speaking as a city councillor on this, but I'm speaking as his daughter. Steve, thank you so much. That was so kind. For those of you that know my dad, know that he's...
Excuse me for one second. Point of information.
You're cutting off a speaker.
I know, I apologize, but I am the maker of the motion.
In this case, you can do it, Steve.
And there was a miscommunication. Can we please add Joanne McKenna, Council McKenna, to this ordinance because she, we spoke about this together.
So it was Joanne's idea and you cut her off? Is that what you're telling me?
Not at all.
All right, roll out her.
Now I lost my momentum and I got to start over again.
All right, start over again.
All right. So I'm speaking on this as his daughter, not as a city councillor, so thank you for the, thank you for the ability to speak, Mr. President. For those of you that know my dad, he's incredibly humble and when this came up, he goes, "You don't get a certificate for doing your job." And that's what it is. My dad wakes up every day and he goes to work, he does his job, and he loves it. And although most of us up here drive him crazy sometimes, he loves every second of it. So Steve, thank you so much and you can come over and go, he will cook dinner and give it to him at the house.
Council McKenna, who's got cut out of this? It's your turn. You don't want to speak? Are you holding out?
I would love to speak. Thank you. I am speechless. Chris is one of my best friends. I absolutely love him. If you are on Facebook, you'll always see a picture of me and Chris, him 6'9" and me 5'6". So I love him and I think this is a great award. Thank you.
Well, is that because of all the arrests he made of you? State your name and address, record please.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. One of the additional things that Sergeant Janino does is he's on the traffic commission as well and it's been an honor to work with him on some things in Ward 5. Particularly, he was very helpful in getting stop signs and stop lines at the intersection of Harrison-Euster Street. So I just want to say thank you. He's always been very realistic and very responsive and it's been great to work with him directly. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, Council Powers.
I'd just like to throw another accolade. We had a situation down on North Shore Road, 1A, where cars were going down to John Avenue when the traffic was backed up at the light at Mills Avenue and speeding, literally speeding down Mills Avenue to beat the traffic down there. And I spoke with Sergeant Janino and as a result of that conversation, we have signs down there that no car, you do not enter between the hours when the school bus would be down there picking up the young children to take them to school. It was a very dangerous situation and it was referred to myself by a couple of the residents and I spoke with Sergeant Janino and it was resolved. And, you know, if there are any further issues down there, I'm sure Sergeant Janino would certainly have a cruiser down there to send some people an understanding that they're not allowed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, everybody else has, you know, basically spoken about what a good guy that Chris is and Sergeant Janino, I...
Now you're going to tell the truth?
Take away police work. He's just, he's a good guy. He's a friend, somebody whose company I enjoy and, you know, he always represents our city well professionally and I think, I think one of the important things that he does that's so important in police work, because I know they deal with an awful lot of things that most of us wouldn't want to deal with, but he always manages to treat people with respect. And I think that's so important. When you have to deal with the police, oftentimes when you're dealing with the police, it isn't under a pleasant set of circumstances, but the one thing I have always found about Christian Janino is that he treats everybody respectfully. So hats off to him.
You're right, that's for sure. Council Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I have to throw a few bouquets at Christian Janino because he's a true professional. Anything to do with traffic, he knows everything about it and my colleague to my right just said that he treats everybody respectfully and that's all you can ask for. And 30 years is quite an accomplishment, so I think it's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I can't agree with everybody. I can't agree with everybody that has spoken so far and Sergeant Janino and everybody knows him as Chris and we've all been calling him that. Yes, he is a good guy, but you want to know something? He knows his stuff. If you come up with an idea that you think will be good, he will rationalize and talk to you and say, "Listen, there's an offside to this too. You know, let's think about before we rush into something. I know you're trying to take care of your constituents, but, you know, we have to look at things rationally and make sure it's public safety related and it's going to be the right thing that we do." So I, you know, I'm up at the traffic commission for the last 18 years, you know, maybe 10 times a month. And for a little while, they were calling it Irish Traffic Commission because it was always my motions that were up there doing something for my ward or even something around the city that I saw. But it's, he's very exciting, he's a great guy and, you know, he may not want this, but I think he does deserve it, just for the 30 years and putting up with Council Patch for the years in the past. But he's a good guy and he does deserve it and I think he should accept it and I hope he does it graciously. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak, but I knew everybody, everybody was going to speak, so it was a pleasure working with Chris for 15 years of that, I believe, or about 15 years of that. Knowing the family for so long, a great family and he, you know, perfect example of it. He was a great policeman, a great person, a friend. And I knew when I saw this, when I was looking at the, before the meeting, I had a feeling that they'll never get him there. But congratulations to Chris. Hopefully he stays at other Ted. Thanks.
Well, I had a personal situation with him also and obviously it affected my wife. So she made a call to Chris and Chris came to my home, within 15 seconds, the issue that she had was gone. And your father knows what I mean. It was gone. And so he is just one heck of a nice guy and he does his work with a smile and, you know, after he does it, even the person that it affected mostly smiles back because he does a great job. And certainly your father knows what he means. State your name and address, record please. And you have two minutes. Rocco.
Rocco Falzoni, 55, Tuscano Ave. I would like to second the motion for my dear friend Christopher Janino. He worked alongside with my brother and Council Patch for a lot, a lot of years and some of the stories off the record. He's a dedicated person. He performs his job very well and it's an honor for me to be a friend of Mr. Christian Janino. So I'd just like to second that motion.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Late motions? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
I just want to take a point and say thank you, everyone. That was really sweet and he's going to kill me when he watches this.
Go ahead. I know that.
Council President, there's one late motion that was submitted by Council Rotundo.
On that late motion submitted by Council Attendo, that's been tabled. See, no further business. I have a few things, announcements that I have to make in acknowledgement of things that are going to be occurring and I'm taking in the honor in which they come. The first is Halloween, which we'll be celebrating on the 31st, Thursday of this week. I hear it's going to be inclement weather. I hope the trickers get out there early and do their thing and everyone treats the kids with respect and I hope that all the trickers and the trickers treat the homeowners with respect. And so I really look forward to a happy event for our kids and have fun, kids. The next thing is, a very important day is going to be occurring on November 5th. That's voting day. It's my hope that the people watching, who just sit back and don't participate in many of the activities, that this is such a civic pride and civic duty and responsibility and you hold it up highly, that this is a thing you ought to be doing. Over the past several years, the percentage of turnout has been discouraging and for whatever reason it may be, it's been going in a downtrend for years. What we're hoping is that people will come to terms, make a decision, and go out and vote. And we hope that all the candidates act accordingly, respectfully for the voters coming to the polls and enjoy the freedom that we all cherish and you see what's happening all too often. The city of Revere does well and our candidates get out there and they introduce themselves to the homeowners, the renters, and anybody else who's willing to listen to them. So give respect, go out and vote. It's a very, very cherished thing that you have, the right and the privilege to vote. Don't let that diminish. Don't let that fall to the wayside because it's important. And I hope that all my colleagues have a wonderful day in that event. And finally, Veterans' Day. I want everybody to enjoy Veterans' Day, go out and have a great time, respect the veterans, show them your allegiance, the men and women who have served in our government deserve all the praise and recognition that's deserving of them and I hope that we all praise them each day as I know we do when we make our pledge to our country and you all joined in with us earlier to pledge our allegiance to our country. So let's pledge allegiance also to our men and women who are out there working for us right now as we're here in this council chamber. I've got two points of privilege that have been asked. First, Council Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned, there's a couple important items in front of us for the residents to go towards voting and Veterans' Day, not to be, well, not to overshadow this, but we also have a couple highlights for fall sports at the high school. On Wednesday, there'll be the first round for the field hockey team, the women's field hockey team will be playing at Harry Delarosa Stadium at 6:30. This is the first time they've made it to the tournament in 31 years. We also have both, we also have both soccer teams will be in the playoffs at some point. The volleyball team will be in the playoffs and of course, the Revere High Undefeated Football Team will be playing Friday night at home at 6:30 at Harry Delarosa Stadium as well this Friday.
They're better than watching the NFL. It's exciting to watch them.
6:30 field hockey on Wednesday, 6:30 football on Friday at home.
Thank you, Council Keefe. Council Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Relating to Veterans' Day, I just want everybody to know that for 15 years, myself and Al Turmanello with the Revere Veterans Committee have been conducting, and the city of Revere, Mark Silvestri have been conducting a dinner dance down at the Beach Run VFW. And it will be held again this year on Sunday night, November 10th. And it's going to be an exciting night. We have Dan Clark, the singing trouper, coming down to entertain again and all our, we have veterans coming down from the Chelsea Soldiers Home and all our veterans from Revere. It's at 5 o'clock on Sunday, November 10th at the Beach Run VFW. So Al Turmanello has tickets, Mark Silvestri has tickets. They're $15 each and that covers the food, it'll be Italian buffet served by Lenny Domeno and we look for a good night and we'll get a lot of donations for raffles that we have that night and we thank Beach Seals for every year they've been giving us a TV for the raffle and we thank them for that. So with that, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Having no further business before the Revere City Council, this city council will stand adjourned until Monday evening, November 18th. Thank you for your attendance. All in favor, opposed? Motion to adjourn is accepted.